One to this spiritual council meeting, January the twenty six, twenty twenty-two, five P M. We're gonna start off by standing and.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, invisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
You call on councilwoman Jamal, I mean, uh, Jeanne McCloud, disidentification.
Let's bow our heads. Most gracious and everlasting Father, as once more again, we come to say thank you for your grace and mercy. We ask you to bless us individually and collectively. We ask you to bless this council that we make the best decision for this county, for this council. Keep us under your care and under your will. We just give you praise for all that you're doing right now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We have now approval of the agenda. Whoever motion is approved, the agenda.
I have a motion.
Yes, sir. Only favor raised right hand. Approval of minutes, December the fifteenth and January the thirteenth. Whoever motion is approved, the minutes.
I make most of the approval.
Okay, is that second? Any discussion? Only favor raised right hand. Will number five, Dr. Orlando McCollie, Jr.
Chairman, frankly, and members of this distinguished body, to all of you, my brothers and sisters who assemble, members of the clergy, uh, my brothers and sister who share this, um, yokebird responsibility here within Dillon County. I have a moral obligation as the, uh, one of the pastors in this, in this county. Mr. Chairman, let me first of all, thank you for the opportunity you have granted me to address you and members of this august body. I want to open up with a passage that is very much familiar with all of you. Uh, I suspect all of us do have our faith practice and we go to church. We're members of the organized body of Christ. Everybody is somebody being the side of God and I suspect that this passage resonates with you as I read Amos, chapter five, beginning from the tenth verse. You hit the one who reproves in court; you despise he who tells the truth. You trample on the poor and force him to give you drink. Therefore you have built stone nations; you will not live in them. Though you have plenty lush vineyard, you will not drink their wine. For I know how many are your offenses and how great your sins are. You oppress the righteous; you take bribe and you deprive the poor of justice in the court. Therefore in the prudent, a man to keep quiet in such time for times are evil. Seek good and not evil, thou ye may live; then the Lord God will be with you just as he has. God hid evil; God loved good; God maintained justice in the court. Perhaps the Lord God will have mercy upon the remnant of Joseph. And for the brevity of time, I would look at the twenty-first. I hate, I despise righteous festival. I cannot stand your assembly, even though you bring me great offering, a great offering. I will not accept them, though you choose charred festival offering, I will not have regard for them. Away with the noise of your songs, I will not listen to them. But let justice roll down like a river and let righteousness, like a never-filling stream. Hamilton, uh, Arizona Hamilton, who we all know as the French Secretary of State, uh, who wrote the Federalist Paper, was very concerned about representative democracy. Hamilton talked about how it would withstand for something who would fall for everything.
Amen.
And so I'm here today because I am one of many preachers here who believe that this council, you have done yourself a due diligence to listen to the voices of the people. But there is a position that I need us to address, which is the acting county administrator for this county.
All right.
And I think it's necessary that we allow the truthfulness of what it mean to have someone who occupies that position. I'm not here to advocate as to whether, who you choose, but I have a preference in terms of who we believe will bring egalitarian culture to this community. Because for the past, uh, few months that you have had an acting, uh, county administrator, I want to also suggest to you that there were a gentleman that was let go here by this county council, a man in the name of Claburn. I have enumerated a lot of stuff that he accomplished, but because of the brevity of time, I will not go into that. Uh, but first and foremost, he established a relationship with the U S A D. Uh, and that brought about, uh, grants that was very, very helpful, uh, to this county. Clean up, organize the landfill, help bring in the elite quartz, coordinate ground with purchase, Dillon County Street were light with projects, unify the fire department and the chiefs, build renovation and keep, uh, the upkeep, email the, uh, upgrade system, uh, clean up and they brought the ministry alliance together. That's why some of us are here today. I live in Columbia. I just made it here 'cause I even came from Atlanta this morning, two fifteen. Then go to Bando, two thirty this morning. But this is important.
Amen.
And so I came to ask you, members of this august body, while you deliberate on who would choose, who you would choose as to the next county administrator, I would suspect that you would get credence to someone who has impeccable record, who whatever reason, politic, whatever, I don't think that would be the case now, but we would have him in the place where you're trying to choose someone as the county administrator, whether acting, I think that would be the best thing to do. I want you to raise your conscience, because you are a part of the representative democracy that Abraham, I mean, uh, uh, Hamilton talked about. It's a democracy that brings all of our children together. And so when we talk about how we move forward, I would think you would give consideration to what is fair, what is equitable, a man who are providing such a, a record, clean record, good financial standing with this county, despite all of that, he will let go. He will let go. As member of the body of Christ, as one of the leaders in this, in this county, and I got a cadre of friends and colleagues who are come to share with me, we need to do what's right. That's what I ask you to do.
Say it again. Amen?
Let's do what's right. Cause you are part of the representative democracy. We elect you because we believe you're listening to us.
You do what's right in our county.
And so if we are finally representative who embraces all of the diversity that Dillon County has, I would think you would vote your conscience to choose a man with this kind of record. I got no fish to fry and I just want justice to roll down like a string.
Amen.
And so let me close with this, because of the time that I've been, I want to abuse your, your kindness. As we look at Abraham, uh, Abraham Lincoln, who brought the, the democracy that we not enjoy, Hamilton has an issue with that. He says sometimes we think that, uh, the voice of the people ought to be the voice of God. He says sometimes people disagree. But his concern there is when you give too many power to few people, many of the, the uh, uh, subjects are denied.
Amen.
When you give more power to few, the men of the constituents suffer. So here we are. How do we create that calendar of being conscientious of how democracy work? And so, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you. I know you're about to deliberate, but I came all the way from Columbia, South Carolina to let you know, do the right thing. That's all I ask for you. And I have people here who affirm and validate that doing the right thing is always the right thing. Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add just to add on that, just two minutes. Um, it's a reference to, um, Tony as well. I was here in twenty eighteen, so I've been here a while. And I've seen when he came in, I really, in my heart, believed he was treated unfair. I see overnight where the policy was changed about domicile. Y'all was on Tony about, you don't stay, you need to move here, you need to move here. But the day that Deacon Jamal swore in, on the day we supposed to be celebrating eating cake, cause they won their seats, they was made to vote on the next administrator without the policy before them. And overnight, the policy was changed that you do not have to be domicile. That's just one, I can go on and on, but I have that time. But that let me know that politics has ruined us. And if we don't do the right thing, it's gonna sell us back for years to come. It's time to do the right thing for the people. That county administrator seat is a very important seat, that we should not be influenced by outside politics. We need to put the right man there in the interim position to do the right thing to move us forward. And down the line, we interview for whoever that candidate need to be, somebody better than Tony or whatever, but for now, he's the best thing for this county. He wasn't perfect, but I knew that this county was moving forward. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're down at number six now, order. Second reading, in order to adopt an agreed district compliance for Dillon County, South Carolina, compliance with the United States Constitution. The Constitution of the State of South Carolina, section four, dash nine, dash ninety, of the South Carolina Code of laws, nineteen seventy-six, is amended in the United States Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, is amended. The Dillon County Council has determined to realign the electoral districts for the election of members of council and according with the federal essential census of twenty-twenty, is the part of the motion.
I make a motion.
We have a motion, is that second?
I'll say.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my discussion is, we are here today talking about second reading on adopting the changing of the lines that came down from the state, and we have not, as a council, sat down and addressed the issues of the changes that was made from the state. And we've talked about it and we've tried to call, I've tried to call you personally, I've tried to call the co-chair personally, you guys are supposed to be the leadership or the point people of this council. You guys have failed to answer my phone call, as well as Councilwoman Cloud's phone call, as well as Councilwoman Dawkins' phone call. And if you guys are gonna leave, you have to leave fairly. You gotta answer the phone regardless of who called. We get a phone stipend and we're here to handle business for all of these people sitting in this room, as well as these pastors. And so I will not be voting to pass a second reading until we do what's right by these citizens, which is hold meetings and get their input on this. First of all, us get together and see if we agree with the changes of these lines. We've tried to work with you all behind closed doors. We've tried to call you, but you failed to answer the phone. I will not vote for this.
All right.
Amen.
Have any more discussion? We have a motion, it's been, and a second to the motion. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? It will be now, third reading, in order to change zoning map classification from rule R U to general commercial, G C tax map number zero seventy dash zero eight dash double O dash zero two six, one acre property owner Quentin Paul Michael, Tamisha Johnson, proposed location Dillon, South Carolina, two nine five three six. This requires a motion, we have a motion.
Make a motion.
We got a motion, is that second?
Second.
Is that second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Six C, third reading, in order to change zoning map classification from rule R U to lot industrial, I D one, tax map number zero sixty-eight dash double O dash double O dash zero seven two, one point four three acres, property owner M D H T Holdens, proposed location Dillon, South Carolina. This requires a motion, we have a motion.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, is that second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. D, first reading, in order to authorize an execution and delivery of an amendment to the infrastructure finance agreement entered into by between Dillon County, South Carolina and Royal Tetra L L C dated as of August the twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, was sought to which Dillon County agreed to provide certain infrastructure credits to the company connection with certain investments to be made by the company in Dillon County, for the purpose of reducing the amount of the infrastructure credits to be provided to the company, their under and other matters related to foregoing. We have a motion, first reading.
I make a motion.
We have a motion, is that second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Number seven, recreational request.
We have one request is from Mervis Berlin at the Lady Library as for spotlighting black businesses profiling Black History Month. Let's see, you are invited to our first black business expo, an event scheduled for Saturday, February nineteenth, from ten to four at the Lady Community Center. And they looking for donations.
I give two hundred.
I give fifty.
Fifty. Fifty.
Fifty. We have a motion, review the request and we quit.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. On eight D, final report.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, everybody's got a copy, should have a copy of it. General fund budget's about eleven million and three, we're about fifty percent, uh, so far for the year through January, or through the middle of January, when this report is running. Um, we're about two hundred and seventy thousand, uh, over budget at this point here, but we've got some revenues probably coming in the month of January, so we should be in a little better shape at, uh, at the February, when we have the February report. Most departments are in line, uh, there's a couple of them that are running close, uh, a little bit over, some departments are actually running, running under at this point here. But, uh, uh, we're doing okay financially from that standpoint, from the budget standpoint. The, uh, other funds are in line. We should be making our bond payments come April, so we should be in good shape on that. So, uh, uh, I feel pretty confident on budget at this point.
Anybody got any questions? Anyone ask Clay?
Yeah, it's like any bond payments or loan payments, anything coming up that we need to know about?
Just like normal bond payments that come open in April, uh, it's like, I'd say April Foolish is not April, April first, but, uh, it's, uh, that's usually when we make our first bond payment, show me. But, uh, um, we should have some little bit extra bond, as I think I mentioned before to council, that, uh, we should pay off a little bit more come this, uh, April, which should free up a little bit more bond capacity.
We're now county administrator report, uh, county broadband update.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we've been, uh, meeting with, uh, uh, Char Communications or Spectrum, as they call, you know what I mean, uh, together. Uh, they met with us, they sent Allen and I some information on agreement action, if you remember back, a couple of councilmen ago, uh, back last month or so, they came in and said they were gonna start in Dillon County to run the broadband. They've identified most of the areas, um, uh, they hadn't been out totally on the ground everywhere, but they've been out in, you know, most of the areas in the county, they should be starting probably in the next couple of months, or starting to implement the, uh, the broadband throughout the county. There are, they did identify about two sections that, um, I think we can use some of our A R P money, American Recovery Relief money to, to help also those. And then I think that leaves us somewhere between eighty and a hundred and twenty, um, houses, not people, but houses that we need to be able to get to. I think that we will be able to identify some of those houses, um, when Char, you know, Char actually gets out there. But the ones that don't do it, you know, we, that we, you know, clearly they can't get to because they're too far down the road or down another section. There's, it, there's a state grant program, uh, that is, that is being proposed by legislature at this point now, these state legislatures should, should be passed in, uh, hopefully March of this year. And so we can, hopefully, uh, I, I would recommend that you take the A R P money, the American Recovery money, and use it to get those, those sections there, because it's about four hundred houses, I think we can get those sections in through that, and then wait on the state grant for that, for that extra eighty to a hundred and twenty houses that we probably can't get to right off the bat. But most of the houses, based on the, uh, time projection that, uh, that they're seeing it right now, should be done in this, in this, this fiscal year, twenty twenty-three. So, um, I mean, you know, don't hold me to it, I'm sure there'll be a few houses that are running over in twenty twenty-four, but I'd say a large majority of the, of the eighty percent of wars should be probably done in twenty twenty-three. So, uh, um, that's a big boost for the county, for, if you're rural county in South Carolina, that's a, that's a big, that's a big win, I think, for, to get everybody on the broadband. And I like to think, you know, you know, our state, state delegation who's done a great job of, uh, helping us get those monies and helping us, you know, make, put Dillon County first, and we're one of the first counties in the states that is gonna start here, so I'm excited about that.
Public Safety Committee report.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the Public Safety Committee met on Tuesday and addressed a couple of items. They were there, uh, one of the items they addressed is, which we, that, which we mixed on the American Rescue Plan Act on the ambulance purchase, but, uh, uh, they wanted me to look at, if you take the sheet here, they wanted me to look at fire and EMS employees and what it would be, how much it would be if, if we increased the, the, uh, the rate of pay based on, you know, fired EMS employees here. And the first one here is, is the EMS employee, you know, fire employees, which shows there that we, I, I base it on fourteen, fourteen full-time staff members, even though we probably only have about twelve or thirteen of them that are actually full-time, fully staffed. And I know we got one that's late short, but I went ahead and based on the full amount, based on that. And that came out for half the year was about seventy-five thousand, try to read the number, seventy-five, nine, thirty-nine, twenty-four, and estimated benefits were about twenty thousand. If you increased it to two dollars, I went to, I looked at two dollars, if you look at two dollars, it's ten twenty-two and fifteen thirty-three for overtime, so that. Um, if you flip over on the other, the back sheet here, we looked at, uh, uh, EMS, which is paramedics and E and Ts basically, and when we looked at that is, uh, going up the same thing, two dollars on that, uh, you could see the rate of pay for, would go from fifteen to seventy-six for paramedics to twenty-three, sixty-four, and then E N T would go to ten sixty-five to fifteen ninety-seven, which would pretty much be the same thing as fire department. And, uh, uh, they do, they are our staff, but they do have fourteen full-time people and they've got, um, they've got a number, but I've got at least nine or ten more part-time people. So therefore, when I figure theirs, uh, you would say full-time people would be around forty-three thousand and part-time in benefits would be about ninety-eight, three seventy-three, twenty-two. So if you increased it by two dollars, that's what be, and of course, if you increase about one dollar, be less, you know, I should, cause I actually did one dollar forty-two, but, uh, about two from that, see. And that was something we, we discussed at the Public Safety Committee, so we were seeing.
Yeah, we discussed that, um, it's time to get those guys a raise. Public safety is paramount in any county you're trying to run. Those guys are way overdue. So we agreed yesterday, bring you guys to see if y'all are, you know, doing the two dollar raise across the board. And those are the numbers of way that costs us long-term, but we, we need to vote on that, right?
Yeah, you got to vote on increase the, increase, increase the budget on allowing out there to go for those particular partners, which, you know, you got to look at seeing what you can do, you know, like I said, it'd be, you know, like I said, it'd be half the year, but if you budget it for next year, you'd basically double that figure, so it'd be one fifty, two hundred, I'll write it two hundred.
We, how are we gonna pay for it right now? But it, but, you know, we put it in the budget, you know, but then you can't pay millions for so much, that'd be for two and a half mils for a year, but how are we gonna push, adopt it today? When, when is it going to affect, when we gonna start paying?
If you put it into effect now, it's going to affect now, you know what I mean? But, but if you vote for, but I mean, you'd have to identify a source either through the American Rescue Plan or through the general fund extra. You have to go through.
Yeah, excuse me, we talked about the A R P money, go ahead and initiate it, anyway, that.
But then we were told Jamal, though, he wanted to raise some salaries one time when we told him that, that wasn't reoccurring money, he couldn't do it.
You're talking about raises is reoccurring.
I know it's reoccurring, but if we use the A R P money now, we won't have to deal with that for about three years down the line, the way we talked about yesterday. And the way we were looking at funding it. Go ahead and allot that money.
You can use money now for, for this one year or whatever.
Use it now to go ahead and establish it. And then down the line, with the new monies we get, we getting more money than, than May. Another one point seven, right?
We're voting on half a year, buddy.
So a half a year right now is how much?
Ninety-eight thousand.
Seventy-five and ninety-eight.
So you saying a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
Yep.
So three hundred and fifty a year.
Correct. That's right.
Got a question on that too, Clay. The, um, the part-time EMS worker?
Yeah.
Do they get the same rate minus the benefits? Is that correct?
Yeah, they get the same rate with minus the benefit.
And, uh, and, um.
Fire guy piece.
Yeah, fire guys.
Mr. Young, how are we, what are we doing in our budget to cover this inflationary period that the United States has experienced and gas and cost for everything going up? Six, there, make sense.
Yeah, we've been, we've been, we've been feeling the crunch, just like everybody else has to. I mean, and some departments have cut back on some of the spending lately. I did look at the fuel report the other day, because we figured the budget last year, we figured gas at, you know, about two fifty a gallon, now it's three dollars or so a gallon. So we, uh, most departments have spent, so far, they've been okay with the fuel aspect of it, but you're all right, some of the purchasing of the, this everyday inflation is, is, is hitting us all the way around.
Where are the, our budget is present?
Not even over budget at this point, you know what I mean? Some of them are running, some of them are running a little bit over what they should be at this, you know, half week to the year, a little bit half week to the year.
They say to take two dollars to get us in line with other counties in the, in the P D, but rather we're losing.
Yeah, so right now, we're the lowest paid, we losing employees. So we need to come up with a number to, to entice people to wanna come back, entice people to say, we can't just drop the ball and not do anything. It's tripping right now, we losing employees.
I'm in favor of giving them a raise. But I say we find it somewhere else. That A R, I mean, that's just my being, I'm just one. But you use the money you get in one time, raises that's reoccurring over and over, it's gonna catch up sometime. I mean, you, I mean, that's just common knowledge there. I mean, if you use money you get in one time. I'm forgiving it to them, but I, I, I would look at different avenues that, that keep coming in to pay that. I mean, cause that money's gonna run out and then what you gonna do?
Yeah, that has to be, take taxes, one.
I, I mean, so.
Well, one thing I think we need to look at is all this wasteful spending we doing. We need to trim the fat. We creating too many positions and we can't fund what we have, looking out for too many people instead of handling the business of this county. That's one of the major problems that we have. As far as gas concerned, there too many cars on the road and ain't doing no work. They need to park the vehicles. We got some employees that got two cars. We've been talking about this since the budget last year, but nobody wants to enact on anything. We talked about this, we talked about looking at the budget, trimming out stuff that we can't afford. We can't fight everybody's battles. The county's in trouble financially and we have to take care of these first responders. That's a, that's a priority. All right? That's just, that's my take on it. Do, I mean, I think we need to go ahead and make a motion or hold on.
If the thousands you gave to city would have been something started with.
But you got any?
I told you to keep it.
All right. What's the, you, you.
He said he used the.
If you use, if you use American Recovery money, you have to do that premium pay, you'd have to.
Into budget.
And you have to, you have to classify as premium pay and then you'd have to get back and, you know, but you gonna have recurring cost.
See, this is what we was talking about, when we was talking about, we use A R P money to buy them ambulance last time, when I said no one's down here, that stuff need to come out of the bond. We can't use the bond money to, to fund employees, we can use A R P. Why are we wasting A R P money on stuff we can buy out of the bond? If that makes sense, we voted the first time to buy those ambulance out of the bond and y'all came back, said, let's use A R P money. I told you then it was a waste. And now we in the same boat. Here we go, item number ten, American Rescue Plan, that's buying ambulance. Let's not do that, let's use it out of the bond. That's what we having for. This money needs to be used to outfit our employees.
We got the money in American Rescue Plan to pay this half a year, whatever.
You got it in there, but the problem is you go, what are you gonna do about year two, three, four?
We got to trade, you're about to, there's nothing to speak.
You can use A R P money, but it is capped, I think, at twenty-six thousand dollars per employee before it's cut off. So you can pay A R, premium pay up to twenty-six thousand dollars per employee, then you cannot use any A R P money over that amount for pay.
That's right. She's right.
Keep in mind when the lowest paid, okay? But did we, did we vote when we did the budget last year to take some of the A R P money and put it to general fund? Did we balance the budget with that, about three hundred thousand dollars? What's the difference with that?
Yeah, and that's what we gave our, that's what we gave our premium pay for, if you remember.
So we need to look at doing that, then if that's the way around that, I mean, I think we need to look at putting some of the A R P money into the general fund and take care of the salaries with that, and let's look at another way to buy stuff like these ambulance that's gonna cost us too much money. Right now, it's important that we get those guys a raise, it's overdue.
Can we? Can we have a workshop the first of the week for full council? And there's a treasurer to come and find out where we're going to get the money. I am, I'm saying give them the raise, but just figure out how we're going to do it, if we have to use.
I don't have a problem with that. The only problem I have, we don't meet or we meet and we keep the carry down the road.
We're going to have to vote on it next Wednesday. But we got, we're going to have to have a workshop before then.
There you go.
This would, you know.
I agree, we got to make sure we get it right.
Then councilman and I.
So we can look at, we gotta do it.
I'm speaking.
We're meeting at the meeting.
Why can't we go ahead and just pass it tonight instead of keeping these guys waiting on when we work on the budget next year? Handle it in the budget. We getting ready to work on the budget in the next month for next year.
We better run Wednesday, it won't take us that long. We never find out some more stuff. I'm for doing it, I will probably vote, I'm going to vote for it. But I got to know what we can do legally to do.
I don't have a problem with having a roundtable discussion to make sure we get it right. But after we have that roundtable discussion, we need to come out of there.
We can do it.
I don't have a problem with that. We can do it that way.
There you go, there you go. There you go.
Okay, we'll go down to number ten now. American Rescue Plan Act for this ambulance, public safety committee.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the public safety committee talked about the ambulance too. We got the same ambulance here. If we purchase ambulance when now, before February first next month, and we can still get the ambulance at the same price we got the other one at two fifty-four, one seventeen, fourteen.
I make a motion, we table that till we have a roundtable discussion about salaries.
Exactly.
We have a motion.
That price is only good until February first.
We can try to have a meeting Monday, Tuesday. And that, that's a bit too late. Monday is the first.
Do you have it in the bond, Clay?
You could probably, yeah, you could probably take it out of bond.
You can take it out of the bond, that'd be one thing, but as far as for this, I'm with Councilman McLeod.
Clay, at the meeting, I thought he said the ambulance cost two thousand, well, not two thousand, two hundred and eight.
Yeah, well, this is what he gave me. This is what we, what we spent last month, two fifty-four, one seventeen. That's with the stretcher and all that type of stuff here. We got three of them coming in, this will be a fourth.
Do you have it passed being the bond?
Yeah, we keep it, one through the, one through, back for rescue plan, you know, the other one through the bond, I think, or something like that, already we did.
Yeah, we changed both of them to American Rescue Plan.
Both of them can't do that, yeah. We were saving the bond, if you remember, for the repair of transfer station, or the building we need transfer station. Which we're going to have to do that again in April, too.
Well, if we get a good one here, we want to table on, table on. There you go, if you pay for it right now.
We can take it up, man, that'd be fine.
Yeah, let's, let's table that.
That's fine, that's okay.
We want to get it right.
They're getting it quiet, they're getting it quiet, that's not, that's not a problem.
We got a motion to table that second. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, next thing, it will be executive session. First now, Madam, Enron County Administrator. We're going to discuss this in our executive session. And the otherwise going to be taking the executive session, we'll come out as executive session. You're welcome to come back in here. And we're going to vote on anything, we'll do it when everybody's in the executive session. Do we have a motion to go ahead and say?
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. I want to thank you, if I retire from this podium, for giving me this audience. As you go into your executive session, one thing I wanted to lift up for your consideration. You talk about economics, which is the issue that flag this whole community. I would hope that we don't see this as an issue of politics, but rather an issue of conscientious judgment, an issue of fairness and equitable treatment for all Dillon County people. I would hope we see this as an issue for this economic stability of this county. Because the record that I wanted to read for you is because I didn't have much to go through. Mr. McClellan left this place with six point five million dollars despite the fact that he was considered someone who carried out the Kleptomania Act. He mismanaged, whatever happened. If you're discussing this pertinent issue, I would hope that you would give it a due consideration. This is not race issue, this is about fairness. It's about fairness. You all were elected as a representative of this constituents of this county. And it would just put us on a personal issue that anybody has and be conscientious of the fact that you were elected and selected by all of these people. Please go in your deliberation and look deep down in your heart and realize you done the right thing. So you would go home, sleep soundly, without any reprisal. Thank you, sir.
And so, S D, do we have six point five million left over in the budget that year?
That was the fund balance, that was not cash.
That, we were over budgeted. I mean, we still had, or is that why we had to run to the rest of the year?
That was fund balance, which is a different, no, it's not a cash value. Fund balance is your assets minus your liabilities equals your fund balance. You have restricted cash in there also. It's not, it's not easy. You can't say this is the amount of cash we have to spend because you have general fund money, you have restricted money from the feds, you have restricted money from the state. So, and they have to be spent on certain projects. Your general fund cash balance was not six point five million dollars, no.
Reverend McCauley, in all respect to you.
Consider me, brother.
In all respect to you. I was here, and I'm not going to sit up here and bash nobody. I'm not going to do, but I was on this council. And there was more than homicide. And if you go back and watch the public hearing, I gave a list of everything of the reason. And what the cause of no personal this and no personal that. And I just wanted to make that statement. Because I feel like I, some of us that was on that council seemed like we getting attacked, like we've just done something that we were just doing for personal reasons, we were just playing out wrong.
I'm glad you brought that out. But I just hope that fairness is practiced in your judgments.
Yes, sir.
Because if there is any accusation that was not verified or proven to be true, then it seem to presuppose something else. And all I'm saying, when you go in your deliberation, let your conscience be your judge. Thank you, sir.
Right before we go, Jenny, I know you're the treasurer, and I know, I respect what you're saying about this budget, but we had an auditor that we paid, the county paid an auditor, and he stood right at that podium. And there's a video where he said that there was six point seven four million dollars left in the budget, unrestricted is what he said. Now, I, I'm not an auditor, I'm not an accountant, but the one that the county paid for, he stood at that podium where Dr. McCauley standing, and that's exactly what he said.
He said we had six point five million dollars left in the budget?
I'm looking at the budget right here, unrestricted, this is the packet he gave us, right?
That's enough, that would be your fund balance.
I'm just telling you, he said it was unrestricted. So all I can do is go by the person who we hired to do the audit. And so I'm going by what he said.
But that's not cash.
That's not cash.
That's not cash.
Listen.
Assets minus liability, cash, accounts receivable, then you have your accounts payables and your liabilities, and you subtract those two, and that gives you the number that you're talking about, that is not cash.
It was put out that the previous administrator spent so much money that we couldn't make payroll. And that the school was going to have to let us borrow some money to make payroll.
And they did.
But before he left the podium, he said this, we are right where we supposed to be as a county. He said that was perfect, that's where we needed to be. That's what he said. That's what he said, it's on video.
So if we want to be rational, and he says six point five is the balance, even if you, if you subtract your liability and your, and your income, and you still have a revenue of six point five, it does not suggest that you in a deficit. That's, that's our economy.
But you could have a cash flow issue with that.
This is, this is not the time to discuss.
Maybe we need to bring that guy back and let him explain that.
Absolutely, that would be great.
Let's bring him back, let him explain.
We have a motion to go ahead and second, second.
I got a motion.
Well, so y'all know, if y'all didn't understand.
We had an executive session where new action was taken. We talked to Mr. Claude Graham and discuss him being interim county administrator until we advertise and hire a full-time administrator. And he was the first administrator Dillon County ever had. He worked here several years, then he went to Marion, he was a Marion County administrator. He worked there many years, then he went to Florence. He was Florence County's administrator. He retired from Florence County and went to Alliance Engineering. And he very well qualified. We start working on the budget whatever right away, and then we can advertise for regular county administrator, which takes some time and we can interview some people and whatever. And then we'll hire a full-time administrator. Claude's the interim administrator, and that's all he's interested in.
I make a motion that we hire Claude Graham as interim administrator, start February the eleventh.
Is that second to that motion?
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Thank you, Claude, for coming. And a motion to adjourn. Is that second?
My second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Adjourn.